All right. Good evening. It's 5:00 P. M. It's August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty five. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Argyle ISD Board of Trustees. At this time, we will determine if a quorum is present.
Leona McDade present.
Josh Westrum present.
Rich McGow present.
Matt Slaton present.
Kurt Hawksworth present.
Uh, Sam Slaton present. We do have a forum established. The time is still five P. M. We will adjourn to executive session. Thank you.
Good evening, the time is six fourteen PM. We have returned from executive session. At this time, we have some special guests from Argyle South Elementary to lead us in our pledges today. Ms. Haynes, do you want to do some introductions here?
Yes, good evening. I brought some staff kids with me tonight to lead the pledges. And we just had a meeting today to talk about expectations and they are great leaders on our campus. So, they are going to be great leaders in the pledge. And they're going to introduce themselves and tell you what they love about South. Okay. Ready? Right here in the microphone.
I love how, my name is Kate and I love how, um, I love Argyle South, I love PE.
Me too.
Are y'all going to go together?
No.
You want to go first or Nala?
No.
Okay, go Cooper, say, "I'm Cooper."
My name is Cooper. And, and I love about Argyle South is, is the books.
The books.
Books.
Hey, do you have a lot of them in there?
My name is Nala and my favorite thing about Argyle South is the teachers.
Alright, good job.
My name is Alex Dobbs and what I love about Argyle South is everybody is kind.
Alright.
My name is Cedric Cavazos and what I love about Argyle South is mess with all my favorite teachers.
Nice.
My name is Aria Brandy and what I love about Argyle South is the very welcoming teachers and all the nice students there. And, we also love our principal, Ms. Haynes.
Oh, good job.
Hi, my name is Esley Rolston and what I love about Argyle South is, um, Ms. Ward and all the teachers.
What do you say?
Hi, my name is Everett and...
What do you love?
I love PE.
Alright, good job, brother.
Good job.
Alright, y'all ready to lead us in our pledges?
Lead us away.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and respected flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much for coming. How's your first week of school been? Is it good? Alright, I'm glad you came back today.
Alright. Yeah, yeah.
Thank y'all for bringing them.
That's terrible. That's terrible. Alright, Mr. Hawkesworth, if you'll lead us in our opening prayer, please.
Dear Lord, thank you to this day. Thank you for all that you do for us. Thank you for the things you do that we see and the many things that you do that we don't know about. Please be with our staff as they completed their first week and they're into their second week. Watch over them, keep them safe, help the students stay safe. Help us make decisions as a board and honor you and put the child first. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Alright. Liz, it's your turn.
Okay, good evening. So, this is our public hearing on the proposed tax rate and budget.
Alright, just confirm, no one signed up for public comment before the meeting started? I trusted you. Mr. Hawkesworth, don't know about that. Sorry, Liz.
That's okay, we'll keep going. So, this is, um, more of an overview of what we've talked about in our budget workshops along the way. Kind of our timeline, just as a reminder, we had a district financial strategy team that worked throughout the budget season, helping prepare the budget and look at strategies for efficiencies and additional revenue streams. We also had a legislative session that ran from January fourteenth to June second and we had some major, um, funding bills in there. Uh, we had the preliminary budget information on February seventeenth at the regular board meeting. We had the workshop in, on March third where we discussed our budget priorities. Um, on the April tenth, uh, we looked at the staffing plan in the workshop. On the June fifth, uh, we looked at the legislative update with House Bill two's compensation and all the changes for the, uh, House Bill two. And then you approve the compensation plan in June and then tonight, we're in August eighteenth at our regular board meeting, talking about adopting the budget and tax rate. Uh, just kind of a recap, we want to jump back to twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, as a reminder, when we started this fiscal year, we had spent quite a few more workshops planning for that one and looking at, uh, a rather large deficit and working our way down, um, from that. However, when we started the school year last year, our enrollment exceeded, um, projections and as y'all know, we are funded on a per student basis, so financial wise, that, um, helped our budget quite a bit. Um, so during the year, we added classroom teachers, we added support positions, there was additional compensation that the board approved for staff. And in the end, we'll have a balanced budget as we end the twenty-four, twenty-five year, going into twenty-five, twenty-six. The priorities that, uh, were set, the four priorities were the compensation package, class size ratios, instructional support positions, um, and a balanced budget. And those were all set, um, with district stakeholders' input. We had the superintendent teacher advisory council, the listen and learn chats with Dr. Cap- uh, Carpenter. We had principal feedback, if y'all remember, we did a staff survey to help determine the ranking of those priorities and get some input on that. And then, of course, the board input on those priorities. As we worked through those priorities, um, to keep our class size ratios lower and to add back in that support, we added sixty-four and a half FTEs, um, at a little, um, just under four point two million. And these are the different positions that were added. Now, remember, some of those teaching positions are contingency that we've talked about through the summer. So, as our, as our enrollment grows throughout the year, if those class size ratios get a little bit higher, um, then we do have the ability to add teaching positions in there and those are already built into the budget. Um, there was some program support...
But I mean, for some exp- I mean, we just, we don't have the space. We may, we, we may have the money, but we don't necessarily have the space.
Correct, we are out of space at, uh, I believe, all of our elementary schools. We may have one classroom left, potentially at South, I think. Um, trying to get creative with some other spaces to free up what might be a classroom or free up some, some areas that are being used with, um, smaller groups that could become a classroom to try and make it through the year that if we do get to higher class sizes, we could add it. Um, we did talk about the fact that we were looking at potentially portable buildings if we had to. That's not the part, you know, that's not the choice that we would want to make, but if the enrollment continues to trend that way, that's the, um, route that we would have to go to keep those class sizes smaller. So, we're looking at the cost of those, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're moving forward on that today.
Well, and, and what I'll add to that is, had we not filled up all of our classrooms to help reduce class sizes for this year, we would, we could potentially have some classrooms space right now. But, you know, the, the direction we took was to put teachers in every classroom, get our class sizes smaller, make room for a little bit of cushion growth for going into the next year. Because we know the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year is definitely a pinch point waiting on five to open. This year, we have all our classrooms full, but our class sizes, you know, are very manageable right now. So, that's why we, we, we've been talking about that. If they continue to grow and we need to keep the class sizes low, we're going to have to look at some other places to put our students. If, unless we just, you know, keep adding to the classrooms we have. So, that's where those conversations have, have been lately.
Okay, so, um, major budget initiatives there with the staffing, um, plan and additions. And then, as we were talking about our compensation plan, the, um, legislature passed House Bill two, which is a major, um, funding increase for public schools in Texas. So, just as a reminder, this is not everything in House Bill two, but these are some of the larger things in House Bill two. There was a small basic allotment increase, but it was offset by the freeze guaranteed yield. Um, the teacher retention allotment is in there for teachers, uh, three to four years was twenty-five hundred, five years and plus was five thousand. It was up to local schools to figure out what to do with anybody up to three years of experience. There was a support staff retention, the allotment for basic costs, um, those are both new. And then the sped allotment is supposed to shift to intensity-based service, that is to come next year. TEA is still defining, um, those, um, intensity-based services. And then the school safety allotment was increased, the teacher incentive allotment was increased. And then the early education allotment has additional support for pre-K. So, what did it mean for us? It was about three hundred and fifteen thousand in basic allotment increase. We lost about a hundred and eighty thousand though of that towards the guaranteed yield. Um, just under one point six in classroom teachers, um, and then you'll see there's support staff, two hundred and fifty-three thousand. The, um, ABC was seven hundred thousand, early education about a hundred and twenty thousand, school safety is about a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Couple of those that, uh, we won't know for a little bit further, um, are still to be determined. And then just an overview of what this bill has done for Argyle ISD is, um, you know, estimated revenues of, uh, just under three point three and expenditures of one point two that are required out of that. Uh, we still are working through some of the things in House Bill two and some of those will still develop over this year because some of them won't go into effect until, um, September of twenty-six. Um, that brought us to our compensation plan, so that changed, the look of that changed as House Bill two passed. Um, and we set a maximum of two point five million for that comp plan. Uh, those that were covered by House Bill two, um, three to four years experience, the five years and greater on the classroom teachers. And then the non-administrative staff, uh, was partially covered by the forty-five dollars for the adjusted ADA. Um, as you can see there, the, um, percentages there were, uh, basically about four percent and eight percent for classroom teachers. And then, what wasn't covered by House Bill two is the teacher pay scale for the zero to two years teachers. We set that at twenty-one hundred, which is about three and a half percent, and then all others at three and a half percent, um, for a total compensation plan of about two and a half million. Um, as you know, again, since we're built on a, um, per student funding basis, the demographer projections play a large part in our budgeting process. So, um, just a reminder that we budget based on those projections and if those projections don't hold true, if they're either, you know, if, if those projections, if we come in under that, then we don't have the funding we budgeted on. If we come in over that, then we have more funding than what we budgeted on. So, it's all based on those projections. Um, and that, this is from the spring update. Um, and then just kind of a breakdown by campus, what we ended the year at versus what the projection was. And now, we know we've all started school at this point, um, those numbers are a little different. Uh, we started a little over a hundred students short from that projection. I think high school was the largest campus off on that, um, they were under by about eighty students or a little more. Um, but we are gaining every day in students and getting closer to that actual projected amount. And that projected amount that the demographer gives us is supposedly as of snap- snapshot date in October.
And one thing I did share in my, end of first week newsletter email that went out Friday is last year, if you'll remember, we started the year with allowing the temporary transfers. And we had tuition-based pre-K opened, so we had about a hundred and seventy temporary transfers plus seventy-five, I think, or so, uh, paid pre-K students that were in those first week numbers that we don't have in this right now. Um, because we closed that off just to make sure we didn't overload, so.
And so, the, the result of that is you may go from a twelve percent growth rate last year to a more manageable eight percent.
Which is what we're projected, right.
Okay.
Okay, property title, property... Okay, property tax, property tax values are another part of our budget. So, just kind of a look since twenty-twenty-one. So, we get a preliminary value at the end of April every year from our appraisal district, and then we get certifies in July, so on July twenty-fifth, they release certified values. And you'll look, there's a similar relationship every year, except for the twenty-three, twenty-four year and twenty-five, twenty-six year. Both of those years were homestead exemption changes by the legislature, and so there is a larger decrease going into the certifies. For example, this year, it's going from a hundred thousand to a hundred and forty thousand. The direction under the law change is that still has to be voted on in November by the state of Texas. However, anytime you're going to put out there to increase the homestead exemption, it's assumed that it will pass. And so, we are to set our tax rates based on that new exemption rather than the old exemption.
So, we were held harmless in twenty-three, twenty-four, but we're not in twenty-five, twenty-six, is that right?
We are held harmless in both years, that's correct. MNO is a little different than INS. So, we're held harmless on MNO in both of those years. On the INS, they held us harmless in twenty-three, twenty-four for anything that was authorized but not issued, so anything that had already been issued, any bonds or any bonds that had been authorized even though hadn't been issued at that point. So, anything that the voters have passed, you were held harmless on. In this twenty-five, twenty-six, however, they only hold you harmless on anything that is issued at the time, so issued by September first. So, if you remember our discussions in June and July, some changes that we made on our bond issue for this year were due to that law, and we worked with our financial advisors to wrap up our next three years of issues into this year in order to save taxpayers in this district money and have the state hold us harmless on that and save us millions of what our taxpayers would have owed had we waited until after September one to issue some of that debt. So, kind of, the answer there is a little bit longer than what you probably wanted, but it depends on whether you're looking at INS or MNO.
It's good that you distinguish between MNO and INS, because this is the INS that we weren't, that there were changes.
That's correct. Anything after September one that's issued.
All right, I'm looking at this graph, and I look at years twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-three. The delta between preliminary values and certified values is very minimal, at least a little bit. And then when you go to twenty-three, twenty-four, all the way to twenty-six, that gap is getting wider.
That's correct.
Does that make your job harder?
It can, yes. So typically, we look at our preliminary values and we use a historical trend to project our certified values. And we continue to budget that way. You know, the, the change in the homestead exemption, you know, you've been budgeting, projecting all along, and then you get to the end of May when you have a law passed, and that changes what you're looking at. Now, should it hold us harmless on the MNO side? Yes, it should. It shouldn't change the overall budget. It should change where the money is coming from in one category, but it does make it harder to estimate that certified value if you're using a trend. You're not taking into account the fact that the homestead exemption changed.
But you're seeing that trend, and now you're factoring it in, that the preliminary values and the certified values, that it's getting wider, the delta.
It is.
Is, is that also because the taxes collected are larger and it's kind of a similar percentage you've been working with? That's a simplistic explanation, I know.
I think it's also.
But that's so the number is larger?
I think it all, it has to do a lot with the number of protests. I mean, if we look at just the appraisal district's data, not just for Argyle ISD, but for their own, all their data, the number of protests each year gets larger for them, which could vary their preliminary and their certified a little bit more than what our trends have shown in the past. There's several factors that, that fall into those. And this does not exactly, this chart doesn't exactly change how we collect taxes or impact the rate that we're setting, but we always get asked what, you know, what, what are the categories and percentages, so we try and include this just for information. It just verifies that we are still heavy residential, we're ninety percent residential, and we have been for a while. We do see that potentially changing with some commercial areas being developed or potentially being developed in the future. But again, as far as setting a tax rate, taxes collected, all of that, this chart doesn't play into that. It's just information for you and for the public to have. So, the process, again, April thirtieth, you get the certified estimate, July twenty-fifth are the certified values, and all of the blue up here are hot links, more for information if you want to go out and look at what our certified values look like. August second is a notice of public meeting. Will you pull that one in? Thank you. So, you're required to post that in the paper so many days in advance, and so that went in on August second. And it's a set form with calculations in there. It's two pages. We scroll to the second page on that one. The best part about this one, and we'll get a little more to it in, in a minute, there in the middle of the page, the comparison of property levy with last year's levy on average residence, so on the average residence, we are proposing to go down just under four hundred dollars in taxes for this coming year, so that is a really good thing for our taxpayers and our tax base overall. And then the truth in taxation worksheet, that's required every year. Again, that's more just information. If you want to go out and see how we get to our numbers and how do we get to a tax rate, there's quite a bit of that in there, and it always gets posted on our website as well. August fifth is the deadline for TEA to calculate our maximum compressed rate, which we call MCR, and then we've got our board meeting tonight. In this process, school districts have to calculate seven tax rates. They're all listed there for you. You can find them all on those different forms that we looked at. But what it comes down to is what the proposed rate on the MNO that's basically set through TEA. They set a range for the MCR based on the growth in the overall state property tax values. There is a range there. The bottom value cannot be greater than ninety percent of the, the top value. So, based on the individual district's property value growth is how that places you within that range each year. So, our local MCR is point five seven nine seven for this coming year. And then to that, you add the tier-two voter-approved pennies, and if y'all remember back in twenty-twelve, the voters here approved ten pennies. I think we've talked about this quite a bit in the past. In twenty-nineteen, it's got compressed to nine point three pennies, so that's where we're at today. So, our total proposed MNO rate for next year is point six seven two seven. And if you want to know what that does for the overall tax rate, it decreases our tax rate by just under four pennies.
Just say it again, Liz.
Decreases the tax rate just under four pennies. So, if you want to look at the trend of what our tax rates have done over the past several years, the red is total tax, the blue is MNO, and then the green is the INS. Our INS tax rate is set based on the outstanding debt that we have and what it takes to pay that outstanding, scheduled outstanding debt payment. That's at fifty cents. We've talked about the probability that it will remain at fifty cents for the near future. So, it is that MNO rate that's getting compressed each year that takes our tax rate down. So, I think that's a great thing for our taxpayers. And again, it's because we had strong growth in values, with a lot of new growth out there, a lot of new value on the rolls, and that continues to compress that tax rate down.
And the, the INS rate, when is it starting, we start to see it in, in all of those tons of small little numbers when we project it to start decreasing again?
I don't remember the exact year. It was either four or five years out, I believe. Okay, so if you want to look at trends, takes our general fund revenue over the last several years. And again, when you have more students, and it's funded on a per-student basis, so your student number increases, your revenue number increases. The ones in the light blue are because they aren't final yet. We're estimating twenty-four, twenty-five, and everything that you see for twenty-four, twenty-five includes the budget amendment numbers that you're getting presented tonight for budget amendment three. If you look at the breakdown, we typically look at those in property taxes, other local, state, and then federal. And if you look over there in the proposed budget for twenty-five, twenty-six, the majority of our property taxes are, I'm sorry, the majority of our revenue is either property taxes or state revenue. And then, a lot of people want to look at that in a trend and a percentage way, so we've kind of put that out there for you as well. You'll notice some of these charts kind of repeat themselves. It's whether you want to look at the amount or the percent. And you'll notice that property taxes back in nineteen-twenty were seventy-four point one percent, and they've trended down to fifty-seven point eight percent now. That is due to the compression at the state end, where the state is funding more of the revenue versus the local taxpayer in wanting that, those MNO rates to go down. And again, just a different way to look at it there. Some people like graphs better than charts. And then we move on to the general fund expenditures in the big picture. So, we talked through during our budget workshops, we talked about campus allocations, we talked about department zero-based budgets, the two largest increases there, we talked about the staffing plan and the compensation plan. And then we came back in, and we also had a collaborative vision worked on this year. And you should always tie your expenses back to the reason you're here and the vision that you have. So, here you've got a collaborative vision, year-one plan. So, every part of the collaborative vision here was lined out. You've got your, your student learning objectives, one, two, three, and four. And then there's a, there's a value, an objective, one, two, three, and four, so all of them are in there, and you'll notice there is a column M there that says budgetary impact. So, we went back through the budget and tried to make sure that everything that had a dollar amount here was picked up somewhere in our budget, so if it wasn't included at the campus level, it wasn't included at the department level, we made sure that if we said it was in our vision, that we've planned on it for this year. So, that was a big part of our budget process as well.
And we will do that, just that same way each year, because it'll have an action plan each year.
That's correct, every single year. And so, the expense trend, again, those two last years in lighter blue because they aren't final yet, but they kind of align with your revenue going up, your expenses are going up. And then we look at expenses a couple of different ways. We look at it by object and we look at it by function. And this is just a reminder that, in the state of Texas, boards approve their budget, school, public school boards approve the budget by fund and function, but we still like to look at it by object as well. So, objects break it down to payroll, contracted services, supplies, travel, things like that. So, you've got some history there of what, what different expendable object categories we have.
Can I make a, can you go back?
Sure.
Okay, no, you just did. Go. You were going where I was going.
There you go.
Eighty-one and a half percent.
That's right, eighty-one and a half percent, and if you want to compare that to where we were at, I did write that down. So, in twenty-four, twenty-five, we were at eighty point two percent. So, over the years, school districts, sixty-one hundred categories have increased, you know. If you look back twenty years ago, we would have told you seventy-five percent was the trend and the ongoing trend, and every year, that's kind of gone up a little bit over and over and over again. So, you're trending around eighty to, some districts are up as eighty, as high as eighty-five percent of payroll is their overall budget in general fund. For us, we're at eighty-one and a half for next year. And then you can see, the next largest is your contracted services. That's usually because that's where your utilities are, your property casualty insurance are in there, so that's why that happens to be your second category. And then we talk about it by function, because again, you have to approve it by fund and function, and so if you look at all of those functions, you want to, I mean, I'm always going to tell you that function eleven instruction should be the highest place you spend your money. That should be the highest percentage in any school district. If you're not spending more on instruction than you are anywhere else, then you might want to rethink what we're doing, right? So, as you see there, instruction is quite a bit higher than anything we have, and it breaks down for every single category. And then if you like to look at it in a percentage, we've given you a trend there on the percentages, and you'll see the instruction has grown a little bit over the years. There was a little bit bigger growth this year, mainly for the push in the overall comp plan and the reduced class sizes and the instructional support at the campus level, with plant maintenance coming in at the second-largest expenditure category. So, just as an overview, if you put up both of those together and just look at an overview, I want to mention again, these are based on assumptions, based on projections, student enrollment, and from that enrollment projection from the demographical, we, we project an average daily attendance, which is what we get paid on. So, if we don't meet that six thousand two hundred and forty-two students, then our revenues will not get there. If we come in over that six thousand two hundred and forty-two students, then our revenue is going to be more, so just, you know, quick flashback to last year when we were in here telling you how many more students we had. That was good financially. Wasn't great in the classroom when they got tight in the classroom, but it was on the financial end. Again, if we come in under, so, like to mention that over and over again, that these are built on assumptions. I've got your tax rate there, and then you've just got a quick little total revenue and total expenses, and where we feel like we're going to be at based on that. I've also got a breakdown of the fund balance. So, if we end this year with exactly, if you approve budget amendment three tonight and we ended exactly dollar for dollar, we'd be at two and a half months operating fund balance, and with a little bit over a million-dollar surplus, we'd be at two point four at the end of next year. Do you have any questions at this point? Couple other funds that you're going to be asked to approve tonight, the INS. Again, this is our debt service. This is really how much does it take to pay our, our debt payments at this point, and that is based on the, what tax rate that you need to set to cover those debt payments, and so we're projecting at fifty cents, which is not a change from last year. You'll see a draw on fund balance. If you remember when RBC talked to us about our bond plan and going forward with the selling a larger bond plan this year, it was going to capitalize interest in using some of our fund balance, and that's what this takes into effect to make that happen for this coming year. And that was to get those bonds issued and qualified under that hold harmless to, to save our taxpayers here locally payments over the years. All right, then you also have student nutrition. Student nutrition, you have two funds. We have, our elementary campuses are on the federal student lunch program, so that is our fund two forty, and then our secondary campuses are not on the program, and since that does not include federal funds, we separate that out into a local fund of fund four ninety-five, and you get the same overview there. You'll notice that fund two forty is projected to increase its operating fund balance a little bit, so we, we feel like we're coming in well under our, our budget for this year, and so we've kind of done a little bit better look at it for next year, trying to get a little bit tighter budget on that. And then four ninety-five, we just separated tho, those out a couple of years ago, so that fund is just now starting to build on its fund balance and move forward. Do you have any questions on student nutrition? If you want to look at, we looked at expenses by fund and object, and we looked expenses by fund and function. If you want to see by fund, function, and object, here's a nice report that you could go out and click on and see all the detail there. And then, the actual recommended budget page, again, in the state of Texas, you approve by fund and function. And so, when it comes time to look at this on, as the action item on the agenda, this is by fund and function what you would actually be asked to approve for the budget. But there is all the detail in the supporting documents. And then we're still working on our budget book that we presented last year for the first time. We're working on that again to get some more information out there on our website. It'll have a future look as well for the next couple of years, and our plan is to get that out by mid-September out there. Do you have any questions on the, the budget or the tax rate that we're talking about for tonight? Any questions?
Thank you for the clarity.
Thank you. This is also an opportunity, anybody else has questions on that. All right, thank y'all very much. Then we'll close our public hearing.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to the consent items. For our August twenty-twenty-five donations, A B C, fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, donation number twenty-one, four thousand four hundred and seventy dollars for weight room VBT units. A B C fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, number twenty-two, three thousand one hundred and sixty dollars for all sports subscription, smart speed plus system. A B C fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, number twenty-three, one thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars for football, GoPro monopod. A B C fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, donation number twenty-four, six thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars for baseball signage. Total August donations, fifteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars. So, do you have any questions on any of the consent items listed? And I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent items as presented.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Westrom, motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. McDowell, the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Move on to construction. Mr. Cohen.
And I've brought a Poe team in tonight to present to you, because I'll be up here enough, so I'm going to let them help me out tonight.
That's good.
All right.
Got Jason Davis and Dale Davis here.
Good evening.
Good to see you guys. Guess we'll start right at the big monster that you guys look at when you pull in the parking lot. Right there at the stadium. There's a great picture from about this angle here. You can see we've got a lot of sheathing on the, on the press box there. If you guys, if we could zoom in on that thing, you guys would be able to see there's probably eight or nine lifts around that thing at most times during the day. We do have our side planted out here in the areas, and we've started to clean up all the way around the, where the practice fields and things are as well, but that picture does show your, your press box there. There's another angle of it. You can see all of our, our columns in, ready for bleachers to be installed right there in front of the press box. We just have to finish the front of that press box before we can get them in our way. We just have to finish the front of that press box before we can get them in our way. So that is our critical path right there is, they will be back next week starting, but we've got to finish the front of that press box before we put them in our path. There's your visitor's side bleachers. Those have been installed, we're working on a punch list though, working to get those done.
Yeah, so we're also doing the roofs and the brick on the visitor's concession stand as well.
IAC building, we've somewhat completed on it. And then we'll start working on, on the inside, buttoning that thing up and, and get our field built on the inside as well.
On the, the west side of the, the parking lot right here, is, do you anticipate that bottleneck being opened up before the IAC is completed, or that open up after the IAC is completed?
Right now, we got a funneling bottleneck into that north side. What we'll try to do is get the fire lanes opened up. Probably still have fence around the IAC, just to finish that last, last month of construction there. Everything else should be opened up before then.
Just another angle, guys, of, you can see they're putting the roof on that concession stand right there. As we get into these pictures, there's a close-up of what everybody wants to see. There's just, a lot of that work has to be done from lifts. There's no other safe way of getting it, it done, so that's what we're working on currently. Dale, when will you be done with the sheathing, you think?
Sheathing should be complete by the end of next week. The glass is going in in the front of the press box right now. All the spandrel glass is in, other than a couple pieces on the ends. But they started today installing the main sheets of glass on the actual press box itself.
That is a view from the press box. So that is where everybody will be sitting, and that'll be your main view looking down at the field when we're complete. So that window frame is in, and the glass will be sitting right there. So that'll be a beautiful view from the press box. See the glass panes that have started to go in upstairs? And we just got to get that sheathing done so we can start getting metal wall panels on it. Here's a look ahead, you know, we're going to be getting the LEDs and the vision board completed by mid-September. Home grandstands are starting. We've actually held them off, but I think they're going to start first part of next week.
Yes, sir.
Roof on the press box is also getting started later this week. And then our home entry canopies are, are in the process of starting now. So our shape is there, it's just going to putting all of our finishes on it and bringing this thing home. Any questions on the stadium before I move on to middle school?
Are there any, any issues right now with any of the material? Any timeline snags that we've hit recently? It looks like we're still, you know, on schedule for the substantial completion. But is there, is there anything known at this point that might cause us a few weeks, or?
No, nothing that we have, that we're not working through. Matt, we, we, we had, all of our metal wall panels were delivered last week. And when they took them off the truck, they damaged a substantial amount of them. So we're working through that process.
I'm sorry, they did what?
That's what we do is manage them.
Oh, they damaged?
Yeah, they, they were damaged when they took them off the truck, the material was, so it was a long.
How long's the manufacturing time for those?
They're saying that we'll have them back, like, we'll have them in our hands three to four weeks. It's going to be the delay. We're working to better that with PatClad, which is our manufacturer at this time. But, but currently, we, we're, we're making adjustments and trying to work through that internally. We don't see that costing the project any more time.
How are we holding them accountable for that?
They're paying for it. We, we, we won't pay for it at all. It's just a matter of, it's a manufacturer issue, so we're going through our, our trade. And we're trying to, to force them to accelerate the, the delay as much as possible. As long as we, we do have a portion of the material that's usable, so if we can get on the front side of the press box, it may work itself out. But currently, that would be the only thing I've mentioned at this time.
Yeah, because you mentioned that you can't start the grandstands until the front of the press box is done.
Correct.
So if we don't have enough panels, because they were damaged when they were delivered, then that will potentially delay things a little bit further.
Potentially, yes, sir.
And so the substantial completion date has moved a little bit. I think it was October, November, now it's December.
It has, and, and, and in the very, very beginning, due to some permit delays, we ended up getting pushed back a little bit. And then we, we've encountered the weather over the last year with rain. And, and I've mentioned this once before, guys, but because of the nature of, of the footprint of the project and how we're working out there, there's so much of this that has to be done in a lift. And rain is the only thing that's impacted us. There's days when you stand out there, you can barely stand up on the ground. And these guys are trying to hold four by eight sheets of materials above their head in a lift a hundred and twenty feet off the ground. It's been rather challenging. We're working through it, and I think we're confident in the substantial completion date. And we work every day to, to try, to try to rein it in as much as possible.
Well, in some way, I mean, we're not going to use it this football season. I, I don't know that it makes that big of a difference. And I'd rather you much be safe, obviously. But I think this was a product of you were telegraphing maybe through the winter, in the spring, that you were encountering some wind and weather delays. And that's, that's materializing here in the.
It is, yes, sir.
In the substantial completion.
Very much so. And, and all of, all of the, the challenges with materials and everything, they've all been overcome. We've got everything here, you know, to, to, to complete the project. With the exception of the damaged material that showed up last week. And I, I, my expectation is, is that PatClad wants to do more of our work. So they're going to figure it out over the next couple of weeks, I'm sure. No further questions, I'll move on to the middle school. This project is going extremely well. As you can see, our football field's already in, tennis court's already in. Dale and the guys have been putting a fence around tennis courts later this week. There's an aerial from where we're at. A lot of the structure will be done over the next month. Slabs are in. If you guys look over there to the left, you'll start seeing that around the perimeter of the side, they've already started planting trees and, and finishing the project all the way around. Perimeter fences are in, fire lanes are in. This project's going very well. There's that big, beautiful football field. Tennis court fence installed, like I mentioned. Storm shelter roof will be completed in the next couple of weeks. Second floor concrete pours are beginning to happen. And then our landscaping out around four of seven and, and trying to, to give the community the best view over the next year while we're still in construction. We're trying to wrap up as much of that on the outside as we can, as quick as possible. We're done with our mask construction out there. We'll complete our retaining walls. Substantial completion here is holding steady of July twenty twenty-six. And, and as long as we don't, you know, encounter any, any challenges, I think we, we may even be able to better that. So at that date, hold strong.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Treppenberger.
All right, so got a lot to share this evening. Obviously, great start to the new year, new school year last week on Tuesday. I put out kind of a note or an email at the end of the week last week, kind of going through some enrollment and class size ratios, which I'll address. But first thing I wanted to share is and celebrate, we appreciated WFPA being out here Friday. They were out here right and early, starting, I think, at four thirty AM in the parking lot. And then had different live feeds between five and eight AM. But Dia Wall came out and really showcased just kind of all things, you know, Argyle High School students. She was, at one point, was with our band, drum majors, and we got to hear the drum line live on TV. And then at one point, she was over on the football field talking to some of our seniors over there. And then back over here in the parking lot, talking to, I think, student council president. In fact, I think it was Ms. Hawxworth was on there. We had UIL academics, we had cheer, Majestics. So just a good smattering of our students being celebrated and just talking about the years of tradition, of successes in the district. So appreciate WFPA coming out and spotlighting us in their Boomtown series and really showcasing our district. And then from a, from a staff perspective, we had New Eagle Academy back at the first part of August. We have had about a hundred and fifty new staff this year, ninety-eight of those are teachers. But I think the important piece I want to really note here is that fifty of those ninety-eight teachers were part of the three and a half million dollar investment that the Board of Trustees approved to help reduce class sizes going into this year. And so I think that's a very important metric for our parents, community, and even our staff to hear over and over, because that was a, a large investment. And again, goes back to why we talked about our classrooms being filled up at this point, going into the school year. And then just from an enrollment standpoint, we had, we opened up with six thousand four hundred and twenty-five students last Tuesday. Today, we had six thousand four hundred and ninety-five students. And so we were up another twenty-four students just today, since, since Friday. We are right now eighty-nine students off of our October projection, as far as you're looking at student by student. And I explained kind of in the email on Friday, that this time last year, we were over two hundred students over. Again, we had allowed our temporary transfers, which were about a hundred and seventy, plus the tuition paid pre-K. So if you put those back in the mix, we would already be over the October projection. So that, that has us trending right now, just eighty-nine off of that number. And then our class size ratios, hopefully you all saw those in the email that went out Friday. Pretty incredible right now. We have really, really nice district average class sizes, anywhere from the seventeens to the nineteenth. And then we have, every campus has at least three to four grade levels below district average. So very, very even across there. And I know our teachers are appreciating that in the classrooms. And obviously, of course, we have some grade levels that are a little closer than others being to that twenty-two possibly. But right now, all of our district class size ratios are under nineteen point four across the district in all grade levels. So that is something to, to, to commend our board on and just everyone for coming to the table on that. Transportation, we had few challenges the first part of the week. And I think our routines and grooves got in, got in play by Friday. I think we had, what'd you say, two phone calls, you were over there, two phone calls?
Two phone calls.
Two phone calls at the end of the day on Friday. So Mr. Bell, and I know we were, you know, we're short on bus drivers right now. So I think anybody that has a CDL is driving a bus on our routes, getting our kids to and from school. But we've recognized that we had some issues over there. I know that one of the things we rectified is we realized the voicemail box was full and figured out, got IT over there to help them get that erased and started back up again. So worked through some kinks there, but appreciate everybody's patience. I know that it doesn't always, you know, there's always some fear sometimes when transportation starts out, and especially with parents, that with the, with the new SmartTag portal, when Mr. Bell rolls that out in the next week or so, parents can see live on their portal exactly where their bus is. So that'll help them see, see those routes. And I know Ms. Stewart, we talked a little bit about portable as well, guys, so I won't go back into that. Again, that conversation is out there right now, just so we know our other classrooms are full. And if we need to continue adding classrooms, that will be our option for the next couple of years. Branding update, so we began discussing phasing in district branding quite some time ago. We revealed at convocation with our staff, our A, our Argyle A, with our, with our wing component there. And we're excited about that brand. I think, you know, we've, we've shared in different publications that wing can keep us focused on soaring together. But this is a phasing approach, so it kind of begins with our website and our Facebook and some of our branding there, district level resources. It'll be things like in this building here, and then also our district fleet of vehicles. But other than that, our campuses will keep the eagle. And some sports and fine arts, if you've noticed, uniforms, helmets, logos. Everyone kind of has a different version of an eagle anyway at this point. But we'll be using the A as far as a district brand. And then this fall, we will be going in line with our timeline and CW Local Board policy, working on naming our new facilities. So our new schools are going to be opening. And with that, will be our transition teams will be working on mascots and colors for our second high school. So all of that's going on this fall. A lot of information will be coming to the board. Probably the November board meeting will be kind of the first reading of those, of those items. And we'll be utilizing students in our middle grades that reside in the impacted zone for the new high schools. So Mr. Heron and some of our coaches and directors and our fine arts and campus principals will be involved in that process with them. I think that is about it. Just a little metric on House School fourteen eighty-one. So obviously, we all started out the school year last Tuesday with the ban on cell phones and personal communication devices. Our kids have done incredible. We had twenty-eight violations at the high school the first week, which is just one point five percent of this total student population. And so those students are figuring things out very quickly. We had three at the middle school and one at the sixth grade center. So very small numbers in terms of violations in fourteen eighty-one. And the high school also has the new vape sensors installed. And there were two hits on the first day of school and have had none since. So I think those are things that were all important to us as we're working to make sure campuses are safe and our students are making, making good choices. And then from a community update, second special session, legislative session kicked off. Star testing remains on the priority list. We have homecoming coming up September twelfth, I believe. And the parade and carnival's on the tenth, so that Wednesday. And then Wednesday, September eleventh, we have been invited as a district with some of our students from the high school to go over to the Harvest Homes for Heroes. If you'll remember, we became friends, really good friends last year with Army Command Sergeant Gretchen Evans and her husband Captain Robert D. Evans, chaplain with the US Navy. They live in Harvest, and they are going to be receiving the mortgage-free home on September eleventh from the hero, Homes for Heroes. And so our band and Majestics and some of our students will be involved in that celebration and recognition. And we are very honored to be a part of that, as Ms. Gretchen is very near and dear to our heart, so.
Awesome.
That's what's going on in the next few weeks.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Liz?
Okay, I think we had briefly mentioned this in the past about investment management services. So with our bond proceeds at this point, and with the projected bronze proceeds that will be here in the next few weeks, we will have a significant number of dollars on hand. And, you know, being, we are not a massive large school district, so we do not employ anyone here to be an investment manager. Even though some of us have to be, have to have the training for Public Funds Investment Act, we are looking for some firm with more expertise, especially when you look at the potential for rates to be decreased over the next several months and cheering in some of those, some of our investments into a little bit longer term of when they may be drawn down and being able to, to still earn some of the rates that are out there right now. So we put it on RFQ for that, and there were some, four firms. It was Hub Investments, Hilltop Securities, Luther King Capital Management, and US Bank Corp Asset Management all responded. After reviewing all of the submissions and going through the ranking process, we believe that Hilltop Securities would be the best overall value to the district. And this would be, the cost of the investment management services would be paid for from the interest earnings. And this would come back to you in September for consideration as action. Do you have any questions about that process, or anything on the investment management?
How, how did Hilltop end up at the top of the list? What?
So we had a ranking criteria, just as we do with any other RFQ, and go through there with the, I think there were five categories. And each firm individually is, is reviewed and ranked in those five categories. And then the firm that has the highest ranking overall is the one that comes up to the top of the list. And that's how we went through and, and had Hilltop Securities at the top of that.
Was it close, or did they?
It was very close, yes. And as, as y'all know, in, in the RFQ process, cost is not a factor as far as the ranking process. But that is something that we look at, you know, after the fact and look at it. And they have a, their costs that they're at is three basis points up to two hundred and fifty million and one basis point on balances above two hundred and fifty million. That kind of gives you an idea of the cost of the services. Any other questions? All right. We'll bring this back to you next month then for consideration, thank you.
Mr. Cohen?
Mr. Cohen?
Okay, so tonight, uh, bringing for information, uh, what we're calling the preliminary GMP for elementary number five. We're, we're calling for that because we wanted to get it to you a month sooner, so we can get a month ahead when we get that approved. Uh, so preliminary means that next month, when it comes back to you for action, the number will not be any higher. Uh, I expect it to be less, but we thought this would be a good way to, to save that month worth of time. And so that's why we brought this, uh, in this way to you. So, uh. Before we get on, the, the budget impact based on this number that you're going to see is the thirty-eight point six eight million from twenty-two bond funds. And then we had an additional amount included in this latest bond in twenty-five. Uh, because we knew we were already over on the construction costs, uh, based on number four. And so it would be approximately twelve point two seven million from twenty-twenty-five bond funds. For a total of nearly fifty-one million dollars. And that's where we're at today.
So.
Go ahead, finish and then I'll have questions.
Okay. And we do have Poe team still here, if they have any.
Yes, thank you.
Questions for them. Uh, so here we, uh, got our, uh, executive summary. Uh, we'll get into more detail in a minute. Uh, our sixty percent estimate that they brought us back in May was at forty-nine point nine million. Uh, today, we're at forty-eight, uh, almost forty-nine million, almost a million less than what we had in May, the sixty percent estimate. For the same scope, uh, that we had at that time. Uh, we've listed some alternates here separately, you'll see. Uh, the first one, alternate one FM four oh seven improvements. Which is combined shoulder improvements and traffic signal. Uh, so during the course of, uh, constructing the deceleration lane to turn into the middle school. When we cut into that pavement, uh, it was determined by text dot that it could not support traffic. Uh, which was part of our middle school project was to re-stripe it, create center turn lanes. So in order to be able to do that, we've actually got to reconstruct, uh, both the north and south shoulders of the road to create the turn lane. Uh, and then in addition, the traffic signal, uh, that we're installing, uh, I believe we need some supplemental funds. Uh, on the elementary school to help pay for that cost. Uh, we had five hundred thousand in the middle school. I don't think that's going to be enough. Uh, so we've added that in here as well. Um, this is an item that we've got to have. But it's not shown with the rest of the GMP, uh, since it's an off-site cost. And it was not included, uh, at sixty percent either, so we didn't want to skew those numbers. But the GMP we're bringing you for information includes that two million dollars. That's how we get to the fifty-one million dollars.
And, and the road improvements to four oh seven, the traffic signal. The other access road, I mean, that's, that's also going to benefit the middle school.
Yes.
So I mean, in some, in some sense, I mean, those costs are getting tagged to the elementary school, but it's benefiting the middle school.
It does.
Okay. And I mean, you could allocate that differently, I guess, but.
We, we could.
Timing of it.
Yes, timing of it, but also, uh, with the middle school construction, we've built most of the infrastructure we need for the elementary. So we've kind of shifted some costs early there. Now we're coming back, you know, some of these costs are going here. I think it all balances out fairly well in the end.
Okay.
And I, I would assume that the construction of the turn lane, the traffic signal is going to happen well before. Tech Stop does anything with four oh seven.
Absolutely, it's going to be well before, yes. No, it would have, would have been nice to be able to coordinate with their project and do something permanent, but. This is what I'd call semi-permanent. Uh, I would not be surprised if it's there a decade or more before they get to it.
And one of the things I think, you know, I've learned, um, and I think the community, the community would benefit, um, from my understanding is that. Argyle is situated in a community that has pretty underdeveloped road infrastructure. And, uh, the growth is occurring, is here, the traffic is, um, enormous, four oh seven is one of the worst. And it's just not adequate. So the unfortunate reality is, is that, you know, we're going to be bringing more traffic to those locations by building schools. But it also makes us in the road building business. And, um, and it's just something that when you see these numbers, you go, look, I mean. It, it's just, maybe other communities, you know, the road infrastructure's better. But I think in some ways, we've, we've, we've had, you know, leadership in government locally that they don't want to build bigger roads. Because they want to keep it rural. And, um, we're, we're having to absorb some of that. Is that, is that a fair?
Absolutely, absolutely.
That if you're building in more developed areas and suburban areas, they have the road infrastructure and you don't have to. I mean, the idea that we're spending millions of dollars on a tech stock road is, you know, I think slightly unusual. Um, you would like to have seen them build that road to, to meet the demands of traffic in advance.
Absolutely.
So a lot of, like, would Highland Village fly around area went through on four oh seven itself.
True.
For, for years where forever it was too lame and by the time you needed it, it was ten years later when they got it.
But we have to have, I mean, four oh seven improvements have to happen. I mean, if we have, we have to have turning lanes, we have to have wider shoulders. We're. I don't go there, I mean, I, I try to avoid that intersection now, um, so I, I can't imagine not including that in.
Right.
Construction.
Right.
As unfortunate as it is.
It's unfortunate, but it is definitely something we do need, you know, to open the, the school to be safe and make sure we get traffic off the road. And we're not backing up traffic on that road any, anymore than it already does without that. Uh, the other, uh, two alternates, alternate two, the access road, so that's, uh, for a potential access road. If you wanted to build it going north up to Sam Davis, we've got an easement that we acquired from, uh, the Grove Church on their two properties. Uh, so that's a, a possibility and that's why that's there. It's not included in the GMP, but it's certainly something we could add. If, if it was desired that we really look into doing that. Uh, and then alternate three, uh, something that we discuss all the time here in administration is the water bills. And so we've got this, uh, for consideration, if you wanted in there, this would be, uh, the installation of a new well, storage tank. Uh, all the pumps that go with that, um, to put that on well water. What's that? What's the warranty?
Warranty on those pumps?
Probably a year, I don't know. We haven't gotten that far.
Got laughing, that's awesome, because it's a good joke.
Just so I'm clear, are you asking? Are you, are you asking us as the board between now and the next month when we're going to approve this? Do we want to consider alternate one, alternate two, and alternate three being included in the GMP?
Yes.
And that's, that's kind of where we're going to be next month?
Correct.
Okay, so.
And we can either show them all in or, or not show them in, we can show it to you either way you want, but for today, I didn't want to skew our building cost comparison by putting any of that in.
And what you're telling me is that we have the, we're over budget on this site from when we bonded originally.
We are.
But we, we, we consider these off-site costs for roads in our twenty-five bond.
We did.
I don't know about the landscape water well, though.
Yeah, I, I guess if we looked at the offset of costs of like, how much we potentially are going to spend on utilities and, and, and water. Irrigating alone versus three million dollars on a well?
I, I have not specifically looked at it on that site. I have looked at it over here, uh, on the high school site. And, uh, I think the payback was between five and seven years. But I have not looked at it with, uh, the rates, uh, from our water supply, which is still an exercise that we need to go through. And these can be added later too as well. I mean, it, it's not a added today and, or not, it's not like that.
It's, but this would, this is good to have. This water well would serve again both sites.
It would serve both sites, yes.
Middle school, okay. I mean, I, I, I can't imagine not including the roads. I think anything to improve access out there. When we acquired that site, we, we specifically negotiated access to Postmaster. We specifically negotiated access easements to Sam Davis. We knew we had four oh seven frontage and we were hopeful and negotiated access to some future road they called Gateway. That they promised or thought would be there, but it's not there.
Correct.
So you don't have Gateway. And then Argyle took away Postmaster. And so all we really got is Sam Davis and four oh seven. We got improved four oh seven, we probably got to have a million in bucks to get to Sam Davis.
Right.
I, I mean, I see it as a worthwhile investment.
So I have a few. What was the JRE GMP number?
Uh, I think I've got that on the next page, if you want to scroll.
While you're looking at, uh, we did have road project there as well, right?
We did have some road to build there as well.
That wasn't in the GMP?
That was in the GMP there. So I, I look forward to those numbers.
Keep going, it's almost there. Keep going. One more. A little bit further. I think it's the next page.
Yeah.
Where I've got the comparison, there you go. So our GMP on.
Forty-three, including, that included the road.
That included that road.
It's a different.
Which is, which is less extensive.
Yeah. You're talking about a residential Cleveland Hills, too lame, half of it was built.
Versus adding of one deceleration lane?
Well, I'm actually, we're actually going to have to build the shoulders, re-improve the shoulders and then we re-stripe to create the center lane. So the shoulders currently won't support traffic, the daily traffic.
Plus the traffic signal.
Plus the traffic signal, yes.
And then text on it'll destroy it when they do.
Yes.
Uh, and do you remember, I guess it was you guys, what, um, inflation factor did you put into ES five? When you built the budget for the bond? You didn't do that, who did that? Did the OK did that?
You did with this current bond?
ES five.
No, no.
Start to somebody on the bond committee.
That would have been, uh.
Talk to Rich.
Hey, Rich.
That would have been Huckabee.
Oh, that was the, that was.
Did the bond, yes.
Talk to the chair.
That was.
You were chair of that.
And I, I don't know off the top of my head, I, I know we had a sliding scale.
I honestly think it was over like twelve percent or higher.
No, 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 no.
No, it was my understanding, the twenty, the twenty-two bond was more of a six or nine percent. Which we missed because of COVID.
But it actually was twelve.
Yeah, that's that. It was a graduated scale, higher for a few months, then it dropped for a few months, and I don't remember the specific levels.
Okay. Yeah, I, I don't know. I, you know, we've, we had a lot of meetings over ES four. We're over budget, everybody pointed to COVID. Now we're in ES five. Here we are again, over budget, having to build more roads. And now a water well shows up for three million dollars for a hole in the ground. Like, I just don't.
Can I, can I?
Please do, it's always.
I know.
Excited to hear this.
I, so when I got, got on in twenty-two. And we were building the schools, the, everything I heard was, um, COVID inflation, material shortages. That's what's contributing to this, this cost problem. So, you know, it's, okay, I mean, everybody's experiencing it. And then we get to JRE and the stadium and indoor and it's, well, materials are starting to balance out. Um, but man, we just have a problem with bids. You know, there's no subs and there's a shortage of, you know, subs bidding on projects and so that they're driving up the cost. And so my question is today, I don't think we have material shortages. I don't think we have a bid problem. What's causing the cost problem?
Well, today, uh, with this, if you look on our project total here, um, over elementary four, uh, it's up about thirteen point two percent. And that's in a, roughly a two-year timeframe, maybe twenty-five, six months. Uh, that historically would be the inflation rate that we would have experienced, you know, say, ten years ago, up until COVID. At about a half percent per month. So I'm pleased that that's, you know, where we're at over the last two years. But now some of the things we're facing are the uncertainty with the tariffs. What is the tariff today? What will it be tomorrow?
Okay.
So that does affect some of the bids, um, you know, and I can't tell you how much because that, you know, the subcontractors are the ones that are going to. Set that and put that in their number and they're competing against others, so they're balancing how much, you know, they'll put in there.
They're setting it in a number.
Yeah, I know.
They, they don't know what it is.
Correct.
And so do, does, and Poe, Mr. Davis, you, you, you worked on this GMP with us, right? I mean, that, that was. We, we approved that and paid you to work with us to come up with this number.
Yes.
Do you agree that what's causing ES five to come in fourteen percent higher or so? Is tariff fear or tariff?
I, I think it's a factor. I think, I think there's several other things that are factors as well.
Okay, can you list those?
I, I can, yes sir. So, for instance, our HVAC units went to a different refrigerant.
Yeah.
That refrigerant is more flammable. It requires more fire alarm structure. It requires more. Uh, safety components inside the HVAC units.
Is that R twenty-two?
Sir.
R twenty-two or is it something?
Oh, wow.
I don't know what they call it.
I don't know what they call it, but it, it just went into effect earlier this year. And it is more flammable, but it is supposed to be more efficient. So they, they, across the boards, that went, that went into effect earlier this year. The cost of those units is up considerably. Um, our HVAC and our plumbing contractors have said that they've went through five price increases since we bid Jane Rustman. Some of that is in regards to the simple things like the valves and the fixtures and things of that nature. But I think a lot of the costs that you're seeing is related to. That HVAC thing alone, I think is, is, is responsible for, my estimation would probably be close to two million of that cost right there.
And are you saying there's, that's just, we have to buy this certain HVAC that has this.
It's the only option.
Only option we have.
Only option.
And when do we, but like, help me understand.
We knew that was coming.
When do we know?
But, but, so I, I think we, we knew it was coming middle of last year. The year before, middle of the year before. So middle of twenty, twenty-three is when we knew it was coming. I don't think anybody understood what the cost impact was going to be. We knew that they were changing the refrigerants, but I don't think anybody completely understood what the cost impact was going to be. Um, I think another contributing factor here is in our fire suppression thing, code change there. So now we have to have a fire cabinet at each exterior door. You used to be able to spread them out every hundred and fifty, two hundred feet, depending on which jurisdiction you're in. Now, code is, you got to have one at every door, exterior door. That's what they're making us do. So there, there's, there's, there's a few things here that I think are, are very explainable due to circumstances and code requirements that have changed. And there's some other things that, you know, as Jeff mentioned, we brought you guys this, uh, GMP for information purposes only. Okay, I, I have a few other things I'm still, still working on and trying to level as well, but.
Let's, let's, I'm sorry I'm taking up time.
No, sir.
I just want to know this. When. Our bids, when you, so this, this GMP is based on actual bids that you've gone out and received for these different skills and.
We did and, and, and I think we got over two hundred and fifty bids on bid day. So it's not, it's not an issue. People want to work here, we got a lot of bids.
So it's not, I mean, I'm just, I'm just astonished. I mean, two hundred and fifty bids seems like, I mean, more than I've heard of on any project since we, we've been doing since twenty-two.
Very much so.
And it, and, but we're not seeing any improvement in price. Are we, are we asking the same people or, I mean, I mean, are all the bids the same or are we just? Picking the highest ones or what are we doing?
We're not picking the highest ones. We, we, uh, those bids are very visible. Jeff has access to, we, we've shared them. Um, there, there's a, I mean.
If I went and asked somebody to share me, would I see HVAC bids come in at three million and HVAC bids come in at five million?
No, sir. No, sir. My most, my, my, our bids on ES five are right there in that four point oh to, we got some of them up to six and seven million dollar range.
Okay. Now, let's talk about tariffs. Do you think tariffs are just buried into the bids? Tariff fears?
I think there's a fear factor there that, 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 that no one will probably share what, what, what that, what that factor is. I think there potentially is. Um, but I will say we've got some, a lot of very competitive bids and, and some of the commodities that you would expect there to be of. Our, our steel guy, very competitive. I got a great number from him. I, we're confident in it. That would be one that I would expect to see that in. We didn't, I think it's really our, our, our raw materials that we're seeing a lot of cost increases in. We didn't, I think it's really our, our, our raw materials that we're seeing a lot of cost increases in, our copper and our, and our computer chips and things of that nature that, you know, some of those items come overseas.
Is there a way to take, to itemize out with the subs when you get these bids, how much of this bid is based on tariff fear?
I can ask, but I don't know that they're ever gonna show their cards completely. I, I can, I can, I can ask them to do so, but I just don't know that anybody's going to, they all competitively bid it.
Yeah, and I, and, and the reason I'm asking, 'cause I don't, I get it. I mean, I believe tariff fear is real, but I'd also believe it can be le, used as leverage.
I agree.
And it just seems like, you know, I mean, this is just the unfortunate reality of, you know, what some of the policies, this is a, they're kind of the on-the-ground impact of some of the policy decisions we've made at the government level, but what, I mean, I'm thinking, can we be creative here? 'Cause I mean, if some of these tariffs out here are ten, fifteen, twenty percent, is there a way to say, hey, you wanna work on this project, itemize out how much tariff inflation you're putting in there, and we'll put it in the contingency part of the budget? We'll, we'll increase it, and if it happens, we'll pay it. If it doesn't, we're not approving it.
Yeah, I, 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 I can, uh, I can see. I don't know how successful I will be, so I, I don't wanna promise you that I can.
When you say success, you're saying they'll, they'll say, I'm not gonna do the work. If you're gonna make me itemize out how much tariff fear is in this bid, then we don't want this, work on this project.
Yes, sir. And I, I think that after living it over, over five years ago, I think there's several contractors that, that did get bid when, when those things did turn upside down. And I'll tell you right now, our contracts with our subcontractors now are written in a way that when I write that contract with them, it's gonna be really hard for them to get a tariff out of us after the fact. So, when we come into them and we write them this contract and you're looking at a five million dollar number, they're not gonna come back to me and say, well, a tariff hit, now I, I, I need help paying for X, Y, or Z because we write our contracts now, and we're gonna hold them accountable for what they bid us and what, what contract they have.
I'm more worried about the tariff doesn't hit.
They, they've brought it to you at five million when it may be four million.
I, I understand, and I, I, it, it's really hard to see what that factor is, Jeff.
It, but has we, I mean, I just wanna know, and maybe I'm unrealistic. I mean, I guess I would ask if I was building a house or if I was building a barn or if I was building something, I would ask the contractor, hey, are you, is, you got some tariff in here? Yeah, okay, well, let's itemize that out. I'm, I don't want you to get hung. I don't, you know, if, if you do pay the tariff, boom, let's put it into contingency.
We, we've established that the way we would all build a home, everybody in here, including these guys, is not how we're forced to build a school. Right? Legislation, they, they force us to do it a certain way. So, I have a question. So, I would say that Pogue has been a really good partner to this district.
Agreed.
Y'all have done a great job. You've done great work. So, this isn't an attack on you. But if the district came back to you and said, the budget's the budget, can you build it? Right? You'd have to, I get it. HVAC's changed. It is what it is. Code has changed. It is what it is. The district will have to make some tough decisions in certain areas. But I, my guess is it could be done.
I, I, I'm not ever gonna tell you there's not a path to do it. What I'm gonna say is the fact that, um, there, there would be some cuts to the projects.
Sure.
Most definitely.
It might not have this type of tile. It might not have carpet. I'm, I'm just making it.
I, I, I...
Right? You may have, the district may have to make some tough decisions, and they may choose in some areas to say, you know what? That's not negotiable. I'm willing to pay a little more for that. But I, I mean, I feel like we get in this same situation every time where it's, the budget's the budget. You can't come back to me with a number. You can say, I can build it, but it's not gonna look like that. It's gonna look like this.
This becomes fake news the next year. Like, we're gonna...
It's, the budget really doesn't mean anything, right? When we go out and ask the voters to vote for a budget to build a school, because very few times has it ever actually, the GMP ever actually met the budget or been under. It just doesn't happen. And we can come up every, every time we do it, it's something different. Oh, it's COVID. It's tariff fear. It's whatever it is. It's always something. And again, I don't, I don't believe that's on you. I, I agree. I know that HVAC has changed. I know the fire code changes all the time. Those are non-negotiable. So, guess what? If the budget, if the budget, so when you build a house, you have a budget. You don't get to go over it, right? Most cases.
Agreed. And Mr. Hawsworth, I'd like to say if you took, if you took the contributing factors that I just described with your HVAC out and you took the fire suppression piece of it out, and, um, there is a true impact that is, that is quantifiable to the plumbing pieces of it, and you took those factors out of what we're looking at today, I think your inflation rate is much closer to what you would be considered normal. I think we've got these driving factors that are putting us just a tad bit over that. You know, if you go a half a percent per month over two years, we're at twelve, and we're at thirteen point two now. I think if you take those contributing factors out that are real, you know...
Yeah, you don't, you don't have a choice on those. But we may have to, in order to stay in budget, knowing that we have certain elements that we don't have a choice on, we probably have to make some cuts in other places.
Yes, sir.
If the budget's the budget, it is what it is.
But you may or may not, if you pick subs, it's, you may find out those two hundred and fifty subs.
Yeah.
There's some subs that say, hey, yeah, if you, if you're willing to protect me in a contingency basis...
I, I don't wanna get into the sub selection, because these guys know, my, my personal opinion, me personally, I don't wanna get in to telling them what sub to use, because over the history of what they do, they know the subs they can rely on and trust on. And you could probably go to your sub list and take every lowest price on that list and probably get pretty close. But they know that it's gonna come back over time. That sub's not gonna deliver. They've, they've got the experience. That sub may say, yeah, you know what? I'll do your contingency plan. And they're going, there's none. These people are not gonna deliver this job.
As, as, as I will speak to the fact, there is some guys there that are, that are low hanging fruit. But I'm just gonna be honest with you. If they're twenty-five percent low, that's not somebody that you guys want me doing business with.
They miss something. It's gonna come back as a change of order.
And, and also, I think that's part of what you guys get with us, is we're, we're, we're gonna pick and qualify people that are gonna give you guys a quality building at the end of the day as well. And, um, so I think that, you know, you, you said, if I went there and I picked all the low guys, could I get there? I, I don't know if I could quite get there, but...
On paper.
Yes. But, but at the end of the day, I don't know if you guys are gonna be happy with the building that we give you at the end of the day.
And because, I mean, we don't wanna overlook that. I mean, I, there's sometimes, and, and to, to speak to what my own personal experiences are, you know, if I had a good experience with a contractor who remodeled my house or built this house, I'm probably not gonna really go out and bid it. I'm like, I like that. That was a good experience, and I'm going with them. I swear by this contractor. And to some extent, Pogue deserves credit for that. You built South. You know what? It's a good school, great school. We didn't have problems. You built JRE. Oh, in case you're debate, great school. And so, I mean, we don't, I mean, I wanna be respectful of that as well. I mean, it does seem expensive. These costs don't seem to go down, and I don't, I wanna, we gotta be cost sensitive at some point here.
And, and I would also like to say, Jeff set the expectation. We expect that number to go down. We bid this thing a little over three weeks ago. Um, there's still some leveling opportunities there, and we're not done working. So, when we come back to you this time next month, we expect that number to go down. I just, we, we wanted to put something in front of you so that way we could start, uh, start this process. And we expect that, that it'll be positive news when we're standing here next month.
On the plumbing side, that's one of the areas the most, with the highest inflationary hit, what, what's primary material that those subs are coming back with?
The, the, the plumbing side is, is the one that I'm still digging into myself. But what I'm getting is that there has been five price increases across the board from all plumbing suppliers over the last two years. So, they've advertised, hey, there're gonna be a fifteen percent increase on January first, or there's gonna be a fifteen percent increase on, you know, on, at March, and those have cons, continued to come, that we've continued to track, and we've got documentation on. We do have a, 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 a lower plumber number than what I am, than what I'm showing you today. But I have not vetted that sub yet, and it would be irresponsible for me to sit here and tell you that that number was valid. So, as we get through that process and we walk, we walk through them, if the guy's financials speak to the fact that he can do the project, his scope is whole, I have no problem doing business with somebody that, 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 that proves they can do the project. Um, so, we do have a, a, a couple of lower numbers that need to be vetted through. We're just not setting on those numbers today.
Was it that two-seven that's up there, is that copper? Is that PEX? What are they, what are they running in those lower bids? Is it the same material?
I think a lot of it could potentially just be labor shortages, guys. I think there's some guys out here that, that are, that are, there, there's a lot of work. What, what I think, uh, I continue to hear that we're in the, you know, just right here in the metroplex between here, Houston and, and San Antonio. We're in the sixth largest economy in the world. There's a lot of projects going on. And I think it's really hard to get contractors that you can rely on to do schools. A lot of them don't wanna tie up, uh, you know, their entire company doing these type of projects because of their, their durations and, and how many resources it ties up. So, I think it limits us in some capacity to, to who we can do business with, but we also just wanna make responsible decisions for you guys. And, um, you know, that we, we'll work with Jeff. We'll work with Corrigan. We'll make sure that we, that we make the right decisions, and we'll continue to, uh, to, to vet through these guys. But plumbing is, is probably the only one that I don't have a, a, a true answer for you tonight. Fire suppression makes a lot of sense. It's code-related. HVAC's code-related. Uh, finished carpentry. We had some scope gaps in, in JRE that we picked up in our bid packages as we bid this project. It's explainable. Doors and hardware, I think a lot of that stuff comes from overseas, and I think that there could potentially be, you know, some, some fear in being able to get those materials. But the plumbing one is the one that I, that I need to spend a little bit of time on, admittedly. That number looks a little high, but like I said, I do have a lower guy. We're just not there yet.
It's hard, because I, I'm not in the day-to-day. I mean, I, you know, you're just showing me these numbers for the, not, you know, kinda the first time, and I, I don't know what the buildup. I don't know how well you vetted them. And it's good to hear those stories, 'cause it gives me more confidence in the process. And I'm trying to think, how do I get more confident that these numbers are legitimate, that, um, and fair and in line with the market? And is there a way without overkill or micromanaging it? Is there a way for you to say, hey, on the plumbing, I had bids go from, you know, a million and a half to three and a half million, and I'm using two point seven? And this is why? Is there a way to say, on HVAC, I went, I had three million and I had six and a half million, and I'm using five, and this is why?
Yes, sir. So, ev, ev, just so you guys are aware, every bid that we collect on bid day, Jeff has access to. And so, he gets to see those things, and, and Jeff holds me accountable to a lot of those things already, so he, he, he's, we're having daily dialogue as we're picking those trades and we're, we're vetting through some of those together. I, I, with this amount of money being spent, I won't stand at this podium and tell you that I'm making those decisions on my own. Uh, Jeff and I have conversations about, hey, we used XYZ contractor on the last one. This is where it's at. We've got this other guy. What's your thoughts? And, um, we'll continue to do that. I know that, that internally, we have a team of three or four guys, whether it be from our operations team or our estimating team, that have worked on this daily for the last three weeks, just vetting through and making sure, and it's just a bid leveling process. But all of that data that we, that we capture is available to Jeff and his team at all times.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I, again, I don't wanna give you more work or just, you know, if it's not, if it's easy to do, just say, bids ranged on this task from that to that, and we use this, and, I mean, because I had a good experience with this contractor, this is the guy I would use. Just give me more confidence in the number.
And I'll tell you in this setting, some things that are, that are driving factors to us is, you know, we, we may get a low plumbing number, but if his financials say that it's gonna be a risk for us to do business with, I don't include him in, in your number. And I think that's part of what you guys are asking us to do with managing the project, is make, you know, financially responsible decisions. And, um, so as, as we get those low guys, we, we do a lot of vetting and making sure that they're, that's what's going on between now and next month, is if we have a low guy, we're capturing their financials on their company. If we have not done business with them, then we're trying to vet through them before we say we can or cannot use that number.
Anything else? There's definitely a process.
I know there is. I'm just not a part of it. Why would you want me to be a part of it?
And it, and it is not difficult to, to do what you ask and say, we had this range in bids, and this is why we chose that. That's, that is not hard to do at all.
Okay, well, thank you.
I mean, that, that's what we work through, but yes, it's easy to present as well.
Liz, for, for good old days syndrome, we had, we had sticker shock, I think, when we built Argyle West. That was, that was twenty-eight million.
Oh.
Twenty, twenty-two or three, I believe it was.
Two hundred thirty-something square foot, I think it was.
It was two, in the two hundred, two, mid-two hundreds.
Two hundred twenty-six a square foot.
Yeah. We didn't have to build a road or buy a three million dollar well.
We did not. I, I will tell you guys, 'cause I, I, I did some prep work. Square footage-wise, we're right across the board with what we're seeing elsewhere.
At four sixty.
We are, and it, it's, uh...
I, 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 when I got on the board and we saw a school that was at two hundred dollars a square foot, we thought that district had lost their mind at two hundred dollar square foot. We're like one fifty a square foot.
Yeah, but you also bought your house for eighty-five bucks a square foot.
Well, that's true. I'm just speaking to inflation in general, so, just...
Well, the schools are a lot different, too. There were a lot of cinder block walls, and that was it.
One window.
No glass, one window, high up window.
They're beautiful buildings. I, I, I think that, that at the end of the day, we just, we just wanna ensure that, that, uh, we're picking the right guys.
Agreed, yeah. And, and to the most, it sounds, seems like you have. We, we gotta have confidence in that process.
We are. There, there's some opportunity here though, still, to, to, to be captured. We just wanna make sure that we do it in a responsible fashion, and we guys got faith in it, and we're gonna be able to perform as well.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate the insight.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, Jeff, let's talk about construction materials.
Materials, testing, inspection, yes. Code required services with any project. Uh, so again, for information only tonight, uh, working with Geotex Engineering, uh, used to be DNS Engineering, somebody who had worked for a long time, currently doing the work on the middle school. And so, we reached out to them, requested, uh, their estimate for those services. It came to a hundred ninety-seven thousand and change, and then we've got twenty thousand dollar, uh, contingency in there in case we should go over any of those testing services, 'cause it's actually based on a, uh, as performed. So, uh, they may estimate three hundred concrete cylinder tests, and, and we may have to do three hundred and twenty based on how the project gets built, so. Uh, it's about ten thousand more than, uh, it cost for Jane Russman. So, that shows a little bit of inflation, but we also have some reduced scope, so it's about ten thousand dollars more. Uh, and so far, we've come in under their estimate every time on every one of their projects.
Did we, did we do this for the middle school?
We did.
Like a hundred yards to the north? We gotta do it again?
We have to do all the testing for every project we build. All the concrete gets tested, all the masonry gets tested, structural steel gets inspected. Those are code requirements. We, we can't opt out of it.
They got a good lobby.
Yeah. So, this'll come back to you next month for, uh, action.
We're not gonna hear about inflation here.
No dollar signs on my information page. So, we brought you legislation last month, but kinda held off a little bit on SB thirteen, which was, had some library stuff in it, because we wanted opportunity for our board subcommittee to meet and discuss Senate Bill thirteen. So, in meeting with our board subcommittee, Dr. McDade, Mrs. Artho, um, were available for our, for this second meeting, and Mr. Hawsworth wasn't available at that time, but provided some input later. So, we have some policies that we cre, our policy we created last year with the subcommittee that addressed the things that came up this year during legislation, and, um, in reviewing that, we feel very confident that the processes that we put in place last year meet the needs of our community, and even though they're not exactly the same as the legislation that was enacted, it covers the same areas. So, we took that information then to the district leadership team to review it, because we are proposing to opt out of some of the things in Senate Bill thirteen, which is challenges, acquisitions, and the committee, because we have all of those processes already built into our own EFB local. So, the DLT also supported that recommendation. So the DLT also supported that recommendation, however, waiting on the TASB update one twenty-three in October, we can't go forward with adding that to the DOI at this time. Dr. McDade or Mr. Hawksworth, do you have anything you want to add about the subcommittee?
He can't add, he wasn't there.
He,
I was a part of the other one.
He was part of the first one and then he provided, provided us with some input afterwards.
I'm good at providing input after. I, I just think it's, you know, I was glad to see that they finally caught up to us.
Exactly.
We were leading the way once again.
That's it.
Yeah.
There, how about that?
Good job.
Well, I agree with that too, I think, I think last year we had the force site to set it up before we even knew legislative stuff was going to come down the pike, so. Um, and the whole idea of, you know, parents being able to see the system that we have, be able to see what their kids check out. I mean, I think we've just kind of been ahead of the curve, so complying with this new law to me was, was pretty easy. I think there were a lot of things that were already in place.
Absolutely, and that is live on our website for parents to go on to learner services and they go on to parent resources to be able to see exactly how they can view their child's checkout history and, um, put a hold on any books they prefer they don't check out, so we're up and going. Do you have any questions for me? Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright.
Welcome back.
Back to construction.
Welcome back.
So this, uh, this item is for action tonight, um, so this would be, um, for our construction procurement methods. Uh, state law allows up to seven different types, uh, if we use anything other than competitive bidding, it's got to be approved by the board, so that's why you're seeing this item. Uh, no budget impact in this decision, that'll come later when we bid the projects. So here I've listed for you, uh, the projects and the methods, uh, that we are recommending. And this is for the, uh, the projects that, uh, I think it's the next item that I'll be recommending, uh, architecture firms for. So construction manager risk procurement, uh, we're recommending that for the Canyon Falls connector hallway and also the Canyon Falls baseball softball complex. And then we're recommending the competitive seal proposal method for the transportation parking here at Canyon Falls, uh, renovations at the three seventy-seven campus for baseball softball fields there. And then, uh, part of the capital improvements that were identified in the twenty twenty-five bond, so we've just called it capital improvements phase one. Uh, so this would be some exterior improvements, uh, at Hilltop Elementary, uh, some auditorium, uh, related, uh, upgrades at three seventy-seven campus. And then some HVAC, uh, unit replacement at sixth grade center, that's the big items in there.
I don't have, I just have one question, on the, uh, CMAR projects, are, is the, are we proposing the connector and the baseball softball, that's one? And those two different projects is one contractor?
No, no, this has got nothing to do with the number of contracts, this is just procurement method.
Two steps ahead, if we, I just, I thought that when we talked about CSP, but maybe, maybe I'm confusing that with the one below.
Uh, there was a question, uh, I believe on the capital improvements.
Okay.
Related to that method. CSP versus CMAR, but I don't remember that question on the hallway. But those would be separate contracts, more than likely, or they would be separate contracts.
Mr. Westrum, you have anything?
Yes, I'd like to, I do like to see a mix of procurement methods, just because I think it's, gives us feedback that we need to see. And I think you've allocated them well. How about that?
That's pretty good.
I've matured, I've matured.
Well, and just, and just like Dr. Jordan mentioned, the board subcommittee, we have had Mr. Westrum and, um, Mr. Slaton, I believe, down there. Mr. Matt Slaton and Mr. Hawksworth involved kind of as a subcommittee with some of these conversations, so anything you guys would like to share as we're going through these items, feel free to, to do so. I probably don't have to give you permission, but there's your formal permission.
I've used up my time. Alright, I'll, uh, entertain a motion to approve action item eleven A as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Hawksworth, motion to approve, do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Westrum, second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you. At least we ordered it this time, so you don't have to sit down.
That's right. Well, it's a difference between information and action, so had to take a break. Next item I have for you is, uh, there's no attachment.
No document.
It's, it's in there, but it was probably, it's, it was the cover sheet for architects, cause they were named on there, so.
I thought it was in there. Well, I have the information, I can read from my notes.
Go ahead, you're good. You're good, go ahead.
No problem, so this is for, uh, our recommendations for approval for, uh, our architect selections for the projects, uh, that you just, uh, uh, took action on for the procurement methods. So for the Canyon Falls, maybe not in the same order, to Canyon Falls connector hallway, uh, we are recommending Corgan, uh, for that project. Uh, they, uh, brought to us a fee, uh, two hundred fifty-two thousand dollars and we'd like to include twenty thousand dollars, uh, for reimbursable expenses when that gets approved, so that includes things, uh, like copies, you know, plan reproduction, those kind of things. Uh, it should not get to twenty thousand, but we always include that. Uh, the Canyon Falls baseball softball complex, uh, we are recommending PBK Architects. Uh, they had proposed a fee on that project of one million, one hundred eighty-two thousand. And again, plus twenty thousand dollars for reimbursables. And this, this is our numbers on the reimbursables, not their numbers. Uh, so this is our contingency. Transportation parking at Canyon Falls, we are bringing recommendation for VLK Architects on that project. Uh, they proposed a fee of one hundred eighty-four thousand dollars. And I'm recommending, uh, ten thousand dollar for reimbursable on that project. Uh, the three seventy-seven baseball softball renovations, we are recommending Corgan on that project and they've proposed a fee of fifty-five thousand dollars on that project. Uh, and again, plus ten thousand dollars in reimbursables. That's a project, uh, just so you know, that we had actually started, uh, two or three years ago on, so we've actually got some progress on there, uh, which we did start with Corgan. And so that's one of the reasons that we're, we're, uh, recommending them, just finishing that project out. So we've already got some documents that we produced, we have to revisit the scope and, and make sure it's still all the same, it hasn't changed, but that's one reason that we're recommending them on that project. Uh, and then for our capital improvements, uh, work, we are, uh, recommending Fluger Architects. And they've proposed a fee, uh, of ten point seven five percent of the cost of work. And, uh, I'd like to include twenty thousand dollars for reimbursable expenses on that. One of the reasons that, uh, that we've brought that one to you as a percentage fee is the, the cost of work needs to be identified again. I know we walked it with creation of the bond, but we don't have good documentation on that and with the recommendation of architect, I'd like to get them to walk it and us identify together, uh, again, with the list we have reviewing those needs to make sure we've got all that scope included. Uh, this also will involve a lot of consultants for them, uh, more so than it would architectural services that they might perform in-house. So we felt the best way to approach that project would be as, on a fee basis, a percentage basis.
Well, what's our budget for capital improvements?
Oh, looks like you found it.
There it is.
Um, so,
For phase one.
Three.
Phase one capital.
Phase one, yeah, the, these are highlights, so at Hilltop, we've got, uh, miscellaneous sidewalk repairs, uh, paving repairs, some retaining wall, uh, areas that need repairs, we've had a lot of, uh, erosion issues that have happened through time. So we're looking at going back and, and correcting that. Uh, accessibility upgrades, uh, that would have to do with things like redoing ADA ramps where we've had movement and you no longer have smooth transition to, uh, maneuver that ramp. At the sixth grade center, uh, it'd be replacement of HVAC units, uh, at the end of their life cycle, I don't have the quantity, but it's, uh, it's probably twenty-five, could even be more than that, I haven't counted in a while. And then correcting some drainage issues, some stormwater drainage issues we've got on that campus. At three seventy-seven, it would be replacement of the theatrical lighting, uh, theatrical rigging and then replacement of auditorium AV system. So basically auditorium equipment is what would be in that part.
Put in a percentage of the work and don't have a total on the work, that, that's heartburn, so.
What, how, what was the budget for phase one? Our budget is,
Was it three million?
It's about three point six million, just adding in my head.
Yeah, I thought it was three something.
For, for the phase one work, you know, that's been pulled out of, of the overall budgets that we had for all the improvements in the twenty-five bond.
And so I, I understand the capital improvement, I mean, I, I think what you're saying is you understand it being a, a higher percentage than other projects because it's kind of messy.
It, it is, it's smaller, uh, you know, so the, the percentages are going to be higher on smaller projects anyway, just in general. Uh, but this one is, is a little bit tricky in that we've got to go walk it and re-identify this and really determine what the scope is today, because it's been two years since we put that bond together.
One of the things I'm, I'm struggling with is like, do I need to hire an architect and pay him ten percent to replace HVACs?
That one in particular, probably not, we, we could potentially go straight to an engineer, but all of these things will have to be permitted. Uh, and so there's some coordination effort that goes into creating a set of documents that we get reviewed, that can get reviewed by the town for permits. And so I think our best value is for combining all of these together. I mean, obviously they'll be submitted separately, but combining the work on the design and the teams so that we'll have the same team, you know, work on all the projects, the same MEP team on the sixth grade center could be the same MEP team on the three seventy-seven campus.
And along those same lines, I mean, one of, yeah, I, I'm just kind of going, is there an opportunity here to go more direct and say, hey, look, sidewalk repairs, retaining wall repairs, paving repairs? Those aren't necessarily, I mean, those are engineered, in my understanding, I mean, all the architects really, well, I'm sure you're doing more, I know there's more architects here.
And I, and you can defend yourself.
Forgot to mention, they are all here, but. I mean, you're really just going to hire an engineer?
Yeah.
Who's going to go and get this permitted, and so what's happening here is we're, we're hiring an architect, we're paying them an architectural fee, who's just going to hire an engineer and mark up the engineering fee? And it's just, whereas we could just, we could just go hire the engineer.
Now, we, we would have to do an RFQ, yes, we can, we would have to go through an RFQ process to get engineers, uh, that we could hire.
And we could eliminate an architectural fee and eliminate the markup of an engineering fee.
So, so Jeff, we're always on.
There, the architectural markup on the engineering fee, but that would take time. Uh, I was told that we were trying to get some of this work done next summer, so I don't know that we have time to go out for an RFQ for some engineers, put it together, get it permitted to hit that summer window.
And one of the, but, and so one of the downsides of the pursuing that avenue of just saying, we're going to directly hire the engineer and do some of these things, it really puts a lot more pressure on you to oversee that project as you're managing all these other.
It would.
Because you're now, you don't have an architect helping you manage the engineer.
Right.
The architect, the architect does hire the engineer, they do provide the insurance, they do do things that bring value to these projects.
They do, they provide onsite services for contract administration, you know, so we're making sure the work's being done properly and inspecting it. Versus the other way, that would, you know, be on us as a district, whether that's me or, you know, Tommy Ledford and myself, or however we divide that up, it would be on us. So there is value there.
And so I, I think, I think I want to look at that, I'm not sure I want to do it here on the phase one. I mean, I think I want to look at that.
Now, there, there are other elements of phase one not up here that we are talking about, which is turf replacement, which is something we can go through by board contracts and do, so that's why it's not part of this package, because the intent is we go through by boards and manage that in-house.
But that's still part of that three point six million that you,
It is not part of that three point six million, no.
Three point six is just these.
Just this, yes.
We end up with three point two, because I have to give ten point, ten points to, to the architect.
It, alright Jeff, is that scope, is that working, I mean, we've worked on this, so, I mean, is that scope pretty defined or is there, like, we can put things in, take things out if we approve this today?
Well, we can put things in, take things out, we don't have to do that today.
But based on this contract, it changes your, how much you're paying the architect on that one. So if you add things, they're getting?
Lesser fee. Take things out.
Yeah.
It's higher fee. I think we do about that one right now.
I will, I will speak to this, aside from that issue, I mean, we did have the opportunity to meet with these, it was, I appreciate the opportunity to put us on a, a committee where we got to actually visit with these architects and I appreciate all the architectural firms coming and making presentations. I know not all, it was just a few of us that were sitting there, and so it was educational for me, I thought their presentations were good. I thought, and I, and I appreciate the effort they put into them and I do like how the district is, you know, the administration is recommending that we do, it's thoughtful in the way that, hey, Corgans worked on the high school site, they understand it, do the connector. Corgans worked on the three seventy-seven baseball field, is involved in it, do it. I thought PBK, I mean, that's the big enchilada in this project, I thought their presentation was fantastic in terms of, uh, their sports.
Division for it.
The sports division, I think Sean, Sean, right, is, is, is here and I thought he was very strong in terms of his understanding of sports complex and the different ways to go about it, I just want to share that with the board. And obviously VLK is very involved in the site on the, on, and, and it makes sense that the bus transportation park is going to be down there, it makes a lot of sense to, to have them there and, and, um, and Fluger has, uh, got an excellent reputation in the, is, is what we've been able to vet, so I, I, I overall like what you're doing here, we can nitpick some of this stuff on the, on the renovation side of it, but, um, I like, I think these projects need to go forward and I think they're quality, reputable architectural firms.
How far are we out from, um, needing to name architects for middle school two and the elementary six, what, what's our timeline kind of on this?
Timeline is, is roughly six weeks, you know, kind of end of the year was always the target, or six weeks, sorry, six months. So, not, not six weeks, sorry. Uh, so that's what I have, you know, kind of always said is, you know, by the end of the year, we need to be very, very close, you know, not necessarily by the end, but moving forward with information and action over the next couple of months thereafter.
Okay.
So we keep them on, online.
I realize the other projects are different size projects, like you said, wha, what's the, the total cost of each one of these above projects for PBK, VLK and Corgan? And what's their, what would that percentage be for them in, in a fee?
I have that, um, so, uh, the budget, construction budget on the connector hallway was six point three million. So that fee, these are fixed fees, equates to four percent of that for Corgan. On the Canyon Falls baseball softball complex, we had a construction budget of nineteen point seven million. That equates to a six percent fee. Uh, on the transportation parking, um, that one was based on, uh, two million, one fifty. Um, I think it may be a little higher than that, should be under three, so I'm going to give you a range. At what they based it on is eight point fifty-five, but if it gets closer to three, that brings it down to about six percent. So depending on the final cost, if we go back and that is a fixed fee, if we look at that, it, the percentage of it changes in that range.
I'm just having a hard time, like, and, and again, I, I hear the size of the project and, you know, it's kind of like a Louis Vuitton, like the smaller the bag, the bigger the tag, I get that. Um, but historically, my time on the board, it's six percent and under and that's something we've been able to successfully negotiate as, as a district. and that's something we've been able to successfully negotiate as as a district. Um, I'm just having a hard time with going from four percent on one project, six percent on another, and then almost eleven on the other, so, um, so, I don't know.
Some of, some of that has been in the prototype elementary school design that we've had, so we've repeated it, so that's one of the reasons we've been able to get some of those lower fees on that.
I mean, it's, to me, it's just as simple as if, you know, if, what am I gonna pay to design a house? And what am I gonna pay to design a remodeled bathroom? And you're gonna pay a higher percentage, I mean, you know, I mean, it's it's no different, so, I get it. I I had a friend that used to say, what was it, penny wise, pound foolish, kind of, what was that line that somebody always used?
I would call that person a friend, but they were on the board with you.
Yeah, no. And so, I I don't mean, some of these are smaller projects, they're higher percentages, but the overall number is not that big. I mean, the big one is 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 the stadium, at one point one million, and that's six percent.
Well, when we met with them, to your point, they all came in and did great presentations, you know, we were pretty clear. What was, what was the budget on that, nineteen? Nineteen point seven. Yeah, we saw plenty that could be done for fifteen, well, that six percent's gonna go up significantly, right? The percentage, right, as a percentage of its fifteen, so. I don't know, I I don't, we can't have our cake, and we 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 tell these guys we want them to hold them to a a hard fee, a flat fee, and now, now I'm saying on the on baseball softball, I wanna go back to percentage, so. It, I don't think we can do it, I think it's, we have to trust that we have good partners and and you know, I mean, look how it's worked out for Pogue, and they've been great partners, and they, you know, they'd have to take some, take some arrows at times, but I think that's what we're looking for, is good partners, so.
And what I like about this, in saying, I'll tell you, this just gives us a chance to see, some of these architects or firms that we haven't worked with before.
Absolutely, it's very diversified here.
And it gives us an opportunity, as we know, we got other projects coming down the pipeline, to figure out, hey, you know, how's this partnership working?
Yeah.
And I like the diversification.
No, I I I do like the diversification, I I I agree with that, I, again, just the.
It's a sticker shock.
It's the sticker shock of ten point seven five percent when kind of the the hard and fast rule, we've, you know, done some, done some, done some hard-nosed negotiations, I I hope Mr. Devonball's not.
Somewhere Mr. Devonball's rolling.
Well, I mean, if that's.
Dave Halkers upset somewhere.
And we're, this is an action item, right?
Yes, sir, it sure is.
I mean, does anybody else have a problem?
Well, you can't ask that. So.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out, do we, do we leave it in? I I mean, we need to prove some of these, I think I'm sensitive to the timing of these things, like, we need to get these people.
Some of these we should have already started design on.
I'd be worried about killing the whole action item over.
I understand, I understand.
One hangup.
So you can, if you want to, you can take it off, just take the last one off, and talk about it more if you want, or you just.
Would, tell me about the timing of the capital improvements from the administration standpoint, I mean, what are your, I mean, is this, do you feel that, I mean, obviously you feel the urgency's there, that's why it's in the action item?
Correct, uh both, it's a higher priority need in that it needs corrected sooner rather than later, and uh if we're gonna hit that next summer window, that's the other reason for the priority. Is trying to have enough time so we can do the design, get it submitted, reviewed, permitted by the town. We've got to, you know, we've got to procure H V A C units and have them on hand before the end of May, or we're not gonna go get them replaced, so that's one of the reasons for for the urgency in that project is to make sure we have the time to to do that and get it done over the summer.
And you think if 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 something that we didn't act on today over the next month, you could refine the scope of this work and that would drive the percentage down from a ten percent to eight percent? Or do you think you'd probably still be at a, eight, nine, ten percent?
I don't think we're gonna.
You have inflation on top of that, that outpaces.
So I don't know that a month gives.
We, we could improve the scope for sure, to know better exactly what we're gonna do, but I I don't know that we're gonna gain a lot in dollars. You know, percentage-wise, it may be two percent, but what is that in in the dollars in it? It's not gonna, to gain us a whole lot, in my opinion.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion to approve action item eleven B as presented, motion to approve. Mr. Westrom, motion to approve, I have a second.
Second.
Mr. Matthew Slaton, second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Budget Amendment Three for the fiscal year that is ending eight thirty-one. This is um, brought it to you last month, the only change on here is we talked about we were gonna add the I N S fund as we got pricing from our bond issue that we just completed, and so if you'll um scroll down, keep going. Keep going, alright, there we go. So there is the um I N S on there that you had not seen yet, we've got to uh incorporate that uh premium on there on bonds sold. Um and so that's the change from last month, but the rest of the amendment is the same as what you saw. Getting our six, six weeks final A D A and student counts in there, um and then looking at where we felt like we would be at the end of the year for all of our different functions. Do you have questions about those? Okay.
I'll entertain a motion to approve action item eleven C as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Matthew Slaton, motion to approve, I have a second.
Second.
Mr. Rich McDowell, second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you. Liz, what are you doing?
Where you going?
Liz.
So, we're gonna have to change it again.
There for a little bit more.
You're gonna be there a couple more, too.
Oh, you wanna approve the budget tonight? Yes, so, um, we had our hearing, our public hearing earlier, we went through this presentation.
Yep.
Um if you will scroll to the very last page of the presentation and bring up the link there. The um good thing there is the, uh this will be a, we call it a balanced budget, it's actually presented as a surplus, but it is a balanced bu- uh budget. Uh on the general fund, uh we discussed briefly about the I N S fund and the um the plan on that, to use the capitalized interest and the draw on the fund balance there. But this is what we talked about, um again, through all of our workshops, bring us to this point. Um I do wanna take one quick ti- moment to thank everybody that's in this process. There were quite a few people that worked on this in developing the twenty-four, twenty-five budget when things looked a lot bleaker. We had buy-in from everybody that really, you know, went into looking at what did we need to do as a, as a district as a whole to try and overcome that deficit, um and that doesn't happen by uh just happening in this office, that happens with all of our staff involved, it happens with our public involved, it happens with the board involved. And so I do wanna tell everybody, thank you for working through that process and getting us to this twenty-five, twenty-six where we're coming in and recommending a surplus budget to you.
Here, here. Does anyone have any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve action item eleven D as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Matthew Slaton, motion to approve, I have a second.
Second.
Mr. Josh Westrom with second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Liz.
Thank you, mister.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're doing the tax rate next, not refresh.
No attachment.
It's refreshing, they were in there, they were just logging in.
There it is.
Okay, uh the cover page, um, there you go. So there is an actual resolution, uh that is another attachment on there that you're actually um to approve the tax rate, but it again, it is a decrease um in taxes due on the average home value of three hundred ninety-four dollars and twenty-eight cents. That's due to the compression on the M and O side of just under four pennies. Um it sets the I N S rate at fifty cents again, total tax rate of one dollar point one seven two seven for tax year twenty twenty-five, which is our fiscal year uh twenty-five, twenty-six. Yes, please. And this is your actual resolution, we'd like to point out um in bold, or sorry, in all caps there, this tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than last year's tax rate, that's a required statement because um while the tax rate is going down, it will bring in a larger dollar amount than it did last year.
Yep. You might have to say that a couple more times.
You have to say that a couple more times, but that is a required statement that has to be on this resolution.
Um can we go back to the cover sheet so Mr. Slaton can read the motion accurately? Anyone have any questions?
Gotta read the resolution, not the motion.
I thought, okay, I'm sorry, read the resolution.
Go back to where you were.
No.
Well, I think you have to make a motion.
I have to make a, you, we have to, okay, alright, go right ahead.
There you go.
You wanna read the resolution first?
How do you wanna do this, Mr. President?
I don't care, as long as it makes Liz happy.
He's getting punchy.
Go ahead, are you ready?
I'm ready, okay.
Gosh, I'm ready.
August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, on this date, we, the Board of Trustees, Argyle Independent School District, hereby levy or set the tax rate on one hundred dollar valuation for the district, for the tax year twenty twenty-five at a total tax rate of one point one seven two seven dollars to be assessed and collected by the duly specified assessor and collector as follows. Zero point six seven two seven cents for the purpose of maintenance operations and fifty cents for the purpose of payment of principal and interest on debt. Such taxes are to be assessed and collected by the tax officials designated by the district. This tax rate will in, will raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than last year's tax rate.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Even though it's a decrease. Yeah, it should say that. Okay, now we can go back. Alright, I'll, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Oh, no, no.
I move that the property tax rate for the twenty twenty-five tax year be approved as presented in the tax rate resolution.
Mr. Matthew Slaton with a motion to approve, I have a second.
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 Mr. Hawkesworth with a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your help.
That's what we're here for.
A few, uh, I think it was a few weeks ago, you approved some contingency positions, um teaching positions. And as the school year started, we, and looking kind of at our special education students, we realized the need that we need some, we need some immediate needs for special education aides, but we also are wanting to add some contingency positions as well so that we don't have to come to you each month requesting one here, one there. So at this time, we're requesting five special education aid positions to hold in contingency, and then probably two of those, of those five, maybe three, we'll, we'll be hiring those right away.
I appreciate the forethought and glad we're in a position from a budgetary standpoint that we can do this, so.
This is coming at the surplus. Seems like a good use of it.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion to approve action item eleven F as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Hawkesworth, motion to approve, I have a second.
Second.
Mr. McDowell with a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright.
More staffing, um, as you know, we are currently short three police officers. Two at one of, two at the elementary schools and then a K-nine unit. And we are having difficulty um attracting qualified applicants, and we have looked at other districts' pay pay plans, and we're trying to be competitive with some of our outlying districts. And so we have Chief Davis, he was the lead behind this, um, did a lot of research, and we found a pay plan that really um is more attractive to a police officer who is more towards the beginning of their career, so there's a s- a higher starting pay. Um so that plan, which I think it's on the next page, um also includes the addition of adding a sergeant position. Chief Davis and I have been discussing this for probably two years now, that whenever he is away, he's he's out this week, actually, he's in Fort Worth for training all week. Um or when he's um in Austin or San Antonio for anything, it would be nice to have somebody else in charge, and he finds somebody to take that role, but we would like to have a designated person that can fulfill that role, and that can be the go-to. And so we've added that P D two position, which is, would be a sergeant position, which would be one person um of our staff.
Not a new position, just a new level of.
Just a new level, it's not another unit, we're not asking for any more units, we're just asking for a change in the pay schedule. Which Ms. Stewart and Dr. Carpenter kind of ran the numbers on this when I, I think I was away, or I don't remember what was going on at that time. But we looked at what it would cost the district, and it would be about forty thousand dollars to make the adjustments to the pay plan and add that sergeant level position.
You know, I I think when the state mandated that all schools have police officers or armed, you know, officers, you create a shortage in, you know, personnel and a demand, and, you know, in order to keep up with that, you're probably gonna have to increase your compensation plan. I mean, it's just, you know, we didn't, uh, two years ago, there wasn't a law, and we were one of the few that had
Right.
offered a position like this, and now virtually every school, but I guess, Chief, that makes it more difficult, that that the competition's out there for these officers.
Yes, sir, competition, uh, well, if I can sit.
If you'll come on up to the, yeah, thank you.
Gotcha, to answer your question, Mr. Westrom, absolutely. I S D police departments, the the applications for I S D police departments have gone through the roof. Most recently, uh Lake Dallas I S D just started their uh police department this last year, came in with an incredibly aggressive and very um competitive pay scale. Typically, when we're putting them in the tiers, uh as as educator tier or um the 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 current play pay plan that our officers are on currently, there's a forty-year pay step. And for officers, going forty-year pay step, especially considering um the the bottom of that pay scale is not competitive for for anything in this area, whether it be I S D police departments or uh local police departments. So by taking a scale like this, compressing it to only six steps, uh that allows our bottom, it really affects our bottom. Those of you, and Mr. Westrom, you know Officer Velo very well. Officer Velo is is an incredible asset here, who has been offered different positions. Um and he's not the only one on the team, but I'm just highlighting him for for sake of conversation. This impacts him big time, and it also allows us to be more competitive to bring people uh in his walk of life currently who, uh you know, we foresee to have years left on their career, as opposed to a second career. Which, again, we have incredible officers throughout the district. Um this just uh allows us to be extremely uh a much higher competitive level to bring some younger officers in who we foresee to stay a while. And if I could say one more thing, we had two tremendous officers leave us uh this last year, and both of them went to higher-paying jobs, both of them.
It it seems like an investment we need to make.
And just to clarify, I know we we're short right now, but you've got all the coverage, ever, we're covered everywhere, we're just needing to get the the full-time officers on.
Correct, our our part-timers have have hopped in and um have have uh contributed significantly over at West. We have quality rotations throughout the district on a day-to-day basis. Um we're continuing to provide the traffic control up in Harvest uh that we've that we've needed um uh for both of those campuses. Um we do, uh we have our eyes on a couple other candidates who were waiting to see what was going to happen here tonight. So we are very, we're very hopeful, and um, yes, our campuses are covered, it's just a bit of a shell game. We can do. We can do it.
Any other questions for Dr. Daniel or Chief Davis? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve action item eleven G as presented. Mr. Hawxworth, motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Matthew Slaton, with a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Thank you, Chief.
All right, the last thing we have, I believe, tonight to consider is, uh, Senate Bill Twelve, um, you've probably heard us talk a little bit about this, but Senate Bill Twelve is a very lengthy, large bill coming out of the legislative session, it's the parental rights bill. And so there are many components to it that are already in play. Some things that require, um, effective by September one, and as we wait on additional uh, guidance, commissioner rules, and things to come down, it was important that we go ahead and adopt the resolution, the board, uh, consider and adopt a resolution for Senate Bill Twelve parental rights. And so we have that in front of you this evening, the highlights are pretty much here on the cover sheet, um, if you'll, if you don't mind going over to the actual resolution, I need to point a few things out, just for the record. Much of what this bill has already, it has in it, has already been practiced in Argyle ISD. Just because, um, we understand the values of this community, and so much of what's in here is what we already practice and do on a daily basis, there are some things that it requires to be more formalized, and so that is, I'm gonna kinda go through those, um, this evening with you for just a moment. But the local policies relating to matters in this bill will be adopted as soon as practicable, but they're all effective, you know, obviously, September one. And so, this bill actually directs, um, uh, it requires the board to adopt a resolution, and these policies were applicable, that directs all staff of contractors, so notice it's also contractors, that's all of our vendors um, that, that do business with us, to comply with the following requirements and directives. So as you go through this, we have as an internally, as a team, we've gone through and looked at where our compliance is in each of these, and so we've been making notes of those. But I think it's important to know, we, we did a district-wide training with staff, we did kind of a flipped learning model, where we gave them all the legislative updates, went through Senate Bill Twelve with them, prior to the staff returning, and then campus principals and, uh, district department leaders went through it as well. Um, but there are some things in here specifically related to, um, diversity, uh, equity and inclusion duties. Um, there's prohibition on all of that now, so employees and contractors cannot assign any of those duties. And so that is not anything that's been happening in this district, but it's in law now for us to make sure that it's not happening or by a vendor that, that comes in and works with us, and we'll be creating a vendor list, um, we will be making sure that all of our vendors receive a copy of this resolution, as well as, um, part of the resolution is a superintendent's directive to give this resolution via electronic and, um, hard copy format to all employees. So we'll be putting it in frontline for staff to sign off on. And some other points of note here, that I think, um, need to make sure that's, that's on the record, um, that districts are and employees are prohibited from assisting students with social transitioning, I think number five's very important, and that's including providing information about social transitioning, or providing guidelines intended to assist a person with social transitioning, transitioning, that has not been a practice in this district, nor will it be a practice in this district, but it puts it in, um, to this bill. I think it's also important to remember, last summer, we updated one of our policies regarding pronouns, um, and that staff would not be required to call a student by a different pronoun than what was on their birth certificate, um, at, at or near birth, or their birth sex. And, um, unless it had parent permission, or a parent requested it, that's no longer the case. It is against the law for any staff member, um, anymore, to comply, to comply even with a parent request, and so that is spelled out. And we will continue to make sure our staff know, um, our parents know, that they, they cannot even request that we do call a student by a different name, or a different pronoun. Um, in the eyes of the law, that's considered, um, assisting with social transitioning, so. Those are some things that we're, we're working on, and making sure compliant, in compliance with, um, we have to make sure that access to records relating to parent, uh, child, all of that's online, which is what we've been doing. Course syllabi for each class, it's under learner services on our website, we've had those posted, and so that's, we're in compliance there. We will also be setting up an internet portal through which parents of students enrolled in the district can provide feedback to every campus, um, to the district, as well as the Board of Trustees, we have our Just Ask Argyle platform, that's more of a Q and A type, uh, dialogue. This will be just a leave of comments, and so we'll be setting those up for over-campus, one for the district, and one for the board. And, uh, you will know when that's up and going. We also have, Senate Bill Twelve requires, uh, public comments to be heard at the beginning of every board meeting, that's already been our practice, um, we have, that's nothing to need to be changed there. Uh, we will also, um, not start any board meetings before five o'clock PM, they have to start outside of the work hours, and so we will make sure that we don't start anything before five PM moving forward. And then, um, also, just, uh, notice, no later than one business day, after an employee first suspects a criminal offense has been committed against a child, the parents have to be notified. So we have a practice in place for, within the twenty-four hours. Um, there's several things in there about the counseling services, health services, um, with permission slips that will be going out. There will be, uh, notices going out to parents next week, that will have counseling services, health services, and a HB-six discipline, um, notifications to all parents. Um, it's also, human sexuality has to, um, before it can, uh, has to be an opt-in process, we don't provide that anyway. However, our fifth-grade students that re, um, they do get permission slips for the human growth and development session that they, lesson that they receive. And there's also, uh, thi- things in there regarding two opportunities for in-person parent conferences on number twenty-two. So we have established those as Friday, October seventeenth, Monday, March sixteenth, as the designated days during the school year. Um, campuses will communicate that information, no student club can be based on sexual orientation or gender identity. Um, so that's been made very clear at our, our campuses, there cannot be any clubs based on that. And then any clubs that we do have, have to have parent permission, and those forms have been created, have been given to the campuses, uh, to gather parent permission. So, a lot of stuff is packed into Senate Bill Twelve, again, much of what's already been our practice, some of it has to just be formalized in sign, uh, forms and permission slips, but those things will be, um, communicated as become available. And then, of course, this resolution will be distributed to all staff and all vendor contractors. Any questions?
No, but I do feel compelled to say
Okay.
That, you know, this is just, I mean, it's, a lot of this is fine and great. Doesn't really apply to us, it just seem, I get concerned, it sets a little bit of a dangerous precedent, that the state needs to mandate all these things on this district, or any district, and where does this kind of slippery slope for me in some regards? Um, and it just, I, when I, when you read through that list, I go, yeah, that's, that's, that's okay, that's okay. I just wonder if they're gonna make these, uh, schools that get vouchers do all these things. It just seems like, you know, it just raises all those things, I mean, do they regulate these schools that they're sent, no, they just impose all this stuff on us. I don't need them to tell me when to set meetings.
Right.
I really don't. You know, and, and there's just different things in there, I don't need them to tell us how to handle public comments, I, I don't need the state interfering in that, but this law passed, we'll, we'll prove it.
Well, and this resolution has twenty-five points, it's hundreds of pages.
And I, I don't know anybody would read all twenty-five and say, they'd agree with all twenty-five.
Right. But I think, I think, you know, this is all imposed, and expected to be, you know, for us to oversee it, and make sure nothing happens with over seven hundred employees and sixty-five hundred kids.
And they didn't give you any money.
No people and no money.
They didn't give you any money to impose all these new policies, and all these new demands for these twenty-five things they articulated, but they said, do it, allocate people to do it,
implement it, run it, monitor it, respond to it, but, but here's no money for it. Right.
And that's why they don't impose it on private schools that get vouchers, they just impose it on public schools. So. Thank you for listening.
Pretty special observant, you, you observant, good observance.
Very cathartic. Do you need Mr. Matthew Slaton to read?
No, he does not have to read the whole thing, but we will have it posted online, and we will get it sent out to everyone. All staff and.
So this is an action item, can I oppose it?
You can, but it is an action item.
But it's the law.
It is the law.
So what if we all oppose it? How does that work?
We'll have, we'll have Ken Pax in here.
Can I, can I just pick out the ones I don't like?
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve action item eleven H as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Hawxworth, motion to approve, do I have a second?
I can't do both. Second.
Mr. Matthew Slaton, with a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right. The time, what are you doing? The time is eight thirty-eight PM, we are adjourned.